I'd like to call a meeting to order at this point. The Health Affairs Board Selectment is state February 11th. All selectmen present. First thing on the agenda is to let you know that this is being taped by Area 58. Can you see it on our local stations, 13 and 14?
Fourteen and fifteen.
Fifteen, I think fifteen.
Yeah. At any rate, and first thing on the agenda is to pledge allegiance, if you join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda, additions or deletions?
Not for me.
Gordon?
No.
Gordon, if you want to take possession of that thing.
Do you want to do a minutes?
Okay.
I move the regular session of January 14th, 2020. The executive session of January 14th, 2020. The executive session of January 28th, 2020.
Second.
Hold on, please.
Aye.
Aye. I move to affirm the approval of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 67 for $396,849.57. Venda warrant number 68 for $52,584.19. Withholding warrant number 69 for $143,492.69. Ambulance commitment from January 27, 2020 to February 2nd, 2020 for $45,010.56. Ambulance recommitment for February 4th, 2020 for $1,205.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to affirm the approval of the following bills. Michael C. Gilman Esquire for $1,947. An attorney, Lawrence P. Mayo, PC, for $3,250.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I move to affirm the approval of the following bill. Brooks and Durensis for $3,375.15.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I want to abstain.
Move to approve the following warrants and commitments. School warrant number 70 for $369,70.34. Venda warrant number 71 for $455,246.54. Mobile home parking fee, number two, for $5,160.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve payment of the selectmen bills dated February 11th. February 11th. To R E L X Inc., doing business as Lexus Nexus for the Law Books subscriptions via internet for $70 from the Law account.
Second. Oh, sorry. I thought that was the last one.
And then, um... From an account, Waterman Grievance Settlement. I don't know what the account number is.
There's no account?
No. Okay. For $12,000.
Second. Oh, it wasn't the last one you gave.
No.
It is the last one.
So it's coming from the reserve fund?
Yes.
So it's coming from the reserve fund.
Are we done?
That's the only two, right?
Yeah, that's the only two.
I can second it now. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Charlie, we have a few minutes. Let's get this on you.
We had a few things come in after the meeting was posted. If there's anything you want me to carry over to the 25th, I can do that. But I wanted to walk through as many of the things as possible. Recycling abatement, this is bill 345 PM. I think you gave them information.
I gave the law information.
I might not know what the board would want to do with that. It just came in, obviously, because that was back in September.
If we want to be fair to all the others that have come before us, we'd have to reject it because it's come in way late all the time. I realize the individual may have some personal problems, but...
I agree. I mean, it hasn't been a perfect system, but I think we need to be consistent. We've certainly denied a lot of requests since the deadline date. I don't know how we not adhere to that.
Do we have a meeting set up with the solid waste?
No, I can talk to Sandy.
Again, I think if we're not providing a service, we're charging for something that we're not providing, so I don't think we should charge it.
I understand that point of view, but we don't know that they're not using the service. If they return the forms, how are we supposed to know?
We know that they're not getting the service because they didn't pay for it. We don't provide the service unless they pay for it. We have a list of people that we don't pick up from. So if we're not picking up from them and they haven't been picked up in over a year, we shouldn't be charging them for the service.
Move, will you, deny?
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote with it so we can talk about it later.
If we're going to fix it, we need to fix it, but this isn't...
Well, that's why I'm saying, that's why I've been asking for a meeting, so...
Okay, Charlie.
Aircraft accident reimbursement. Town's been sent a check from Eventco Insurance Company for the wages and vehicle use expenses for the fire department associated with the accident. The check goes into the town's insurance recovery account, but in order for that money to go back into the wage and vehicle use expense accounts for the fire department, the board needs to approve transfers from the insurance recovery account to those two other accounts. So wages would be $3,964.17. Vehicle use expense would be $3,200.
I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You have a site plan review, set of plans for a proposed change to the standalone ATM at Santander Air. The board can send any comments or questions to the planning board in time for the planning board's meetings on February 20th and March 5th. Talent Bank form, Marlene Amadee is interested in sorting their variety of appointed elected boards. That form's been sent to those committees. Bond release for road work, this was for utility work that was done on Indian Path Road a year ago. The bond's been held for that year. Steve Hurrywood has taken a look at the road and sees no reason to not release the bond, so he's recommending release of the bond.
Did they leave the road in good condition?
Yeah, he said it was fine.
Okay, so move.
Do we need a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Make a motion to release the bond, Indian Path Road work?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pam, left your note. Did you want to put the picture of Pope's Tavern that was sketched by Bureau Foster on the cover of the town report? Pam, is that up here or is it...
That's up.
One over there?
One on the left.
Yep.
I think we've used other ones in other years lately. We haven't used that one yet.
I'll make a motion that we use that picture for the cover.
If you're there, the other place would be Hops, I can think of.
I was thinking of putting Troy on. For his years of service.
Do you not have any black?
Maybe we could have the both of you, like Mount Rushmore, superimposed.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Oh, okay.
Well, we could superimpose and do the side pictures and then the front picture.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. The little lines.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
He started. I was just following through.
Just to follow through, I think, let's finish up the collection and... Oh, wait, wait, there's still one more after that, right?
No, there isn't because we put two on the front.
Oh, that's right.
One on the back, it'd be the front, and then the rear of the front.
So I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm recommending that the board approve MLAs for Pam McSherry for leave beginning on March 5th.
Okay, so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Electantly.
I did receive a note from all calling planning council, our delegate seat there is still vacant. I'll do a press release. I'm not quite sure it's going to get anything, but it's the only way of getting the seat filled in the long term. Video surveillance registry. While the board was informed about this at the selectmen's meeting November 26th, police chief has now asked that the board approve the establishment of the registry, given a copy to the board of what you all had gotten back in November. So the registry is completely voluntary. If you have a camera that you like to register with the, you know, this is a video camera that you like to register with the police department, you can do so. There's no obligation. And if you do, and there's an incident where they think your camera may have captured something, they come to you, ask for permission. It's not, you know, they don't come in there and demand the video. They can, they simply ask and you can then provide that to them. So the police chief though asked if the board would, as opposed to just having the information about it, if the board would take affirmative vote to establish it.
I think it's a good idea, but you know, as long as you get permission from the residents. This is businesses or just residents?
Businesses and residents. We'll have to get a form, the Caesar's set up a form so it's fillable on the town's website. So anybody that wants to register, just go on and fill in the information and then we'll retrieve that information and create a database. So it's businesses and private citizens.
So what happens? What happens if someone moves out of the house? Does it carry over to the next individual? I think we need to take a look at that.
Well, we could, yeah, we could, I mean, we could, you know, reach out to the lawn or just having sure that people notify us that, you know, we can put something in there.
But the thing, the point will be is that even if the ownership of the property changed hands, it's still voluntary. Even if the previous owner registered the camera and the chief or someone from the department comes in and says, instead of Mr. Smith, it's Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones, we understand you have a camera there, it was on our registry, you had an incident, can you give us the footage? Mr. Jones, the new owner, doesn't have to.
Well, it just has to be put out there, that's all. Okay, board?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And school building project, the Massachusetts School Building Authority would like three new signed copies of the funding agreement and budget amendment for the school project signed by the authorized three individuals. And, but this is, it's the same forms that, in fact, we've had town officials sign before, but they wanted more signatures on them. There's a budget amendment form, which I've signed, which Troy would sign over here, and then write, sign, print, and date.
You need to vote on it.
If the board would authorize Troy to sign these ones, and then there's a separate form, there's three pages of signatures, three copies. Each of the members of the board sign one signature page. So in this case, so if the board were to approve the amendment to the funding agreement, and this is obviously from a couple of years ago, but they're still doing paperwork on this.
Need a motion?
Yes, please.
So move.
Second.
So, yeah, right there. So in this case, as I mentioned, there are three pages, one signature per page, and we'll need the signature, the name of the person, person's office, and the date.
So I move it.
Tom moved it, I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So when it gets down to you, find the page that hasn't been signed yet.
This has to be signed, but do we sign it?
No. Sign, print, your office, your date, and then Tom signs the next one underneath that, and Warren signs one after that.
This is way too confusing.
Yes.
Late in the day, it's a lot of instruction.
Do you want just a thumbprint?
No, but we want blood. We've got a little, got a needle. On the material that came in as part of the regular agenda. Mantis Estates, the hearing with the ZVA that was scheduled for yesterday has been postponed to Thursday, February 20th at 7:00 PM due to a failure in the proper posting that meeting. Attorney Quest will attend that meeting on the 20th. Legislative breakfast, the nearest one's going to be for the spring series is going to be in Carver on Friday, March 6th. Troy, you're going to need to sign, there's three copies, you sign one page of each of them. Each selectman signs one page each of the three copies.
Yeah, so you have to sign.
Troy needs to sign one of the three pages, Tom does, Warren does.
My mistake.
Like Tom said, it's a little bit overly complex, so... Waterman, termination grievance settlement, fines can be approved and transferred to $12,000 in connection with the settlement. Board still needs to approve, which since they did by vote earlier this, tonight, and to sign the settlement agreement, which I'll get. This case is only one copy, so that helps. Signatures now and there. Plane board vacancy conflict of interest. Alan Diaz had asked to meet with the board selectmen to discuss the process of filling a vacancy, also selectman Andrews allegations of Mr. Diaz having a conflict of interest in connection with Mr. Diaz's activities. I did not make an appointment for him to come in yet. I didn't know if the board wished for me to make an appointment.
I spoke to him, he seemed satisfied with that.
I'm talking with you.
Okay.
We look back on it. Library parks, parking lot streetlights, vehicle went off the road on February 1st, looked down a light pole that was on the grassy area by the library that cut off electricity to the other light poles in the parking lot. Scott returns during the bus, restored electricity to the poles. Myar, our insurer's been contacted about the accident, and Scott's looking also at various possibilities for the replacement of the poles as part of the repair work. On the Andrews versus Halifax case, party trust has asked the land court judge to extend the deadlines for verification of the building permits. In addition, both Mr. Andrews and the party trust have filed appeals of the land court's judge's decision to the Massachusetts Appeals Court. Mr. Andrews for both for additional zoning relief and additional compensation from the town, and party trust is basically just on the, would like to see the land court's judge reverse on the zoning. So that's just played as it goes until it comes next.
All right, now it's now 7:45. And we have in-season, out-of-season, around-the-season.
We'll sign this one, too.
So this is not quite a continuation, but this is the formal date for the hearing because we hadn't gotten the newspaper advertisement in earlier. The change of premises, not in the sense of the building's changing or anything like that, but the space inside the building that you wish to use to serve alcohol or have people consume alcohol is changing from what we originally had in the license to other areas in the building. Requires a public hearing, notice to the butters and such are accepting comments. We accepted comments a couple of weeks ago, but I don't think anybody was here. I don't know if anybody's here for this public hearing.
Maybe we'll explain what you're looking to do.
We're looking to include the whole building with liquor license and three outside patios, decks for the overall. Now we can serve alcohol on all three patios and inside the building.
So presently, you have it just in the one little ballroom there?
It's like a two, well, now it'd be like a three ballrooms.
Yeah.
So this way it covers through the kitchen and it'll be on the other side of the BRS.
Gordon?
I'm good with it. Finally.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Do we, are we having a public hearing right now?
Oh, oh. Already asked.
They were taking calls, yeah.
So do we have to do a vote to open and close?
No.
Okay, motion to approve, then.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Just make sure they're not drinking while they're cooking.
But there's a condition, you have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
That's why she's here. I'll go home.
92 Lingard Street update, one vehicle's been removed and another should be removed during the next week. No one's claiming the boat. I'm working with town council about the best method of disposing of it. Basically, it's going to be a letter to anybody who might have an interest saying, hi, we are getting rid of this boat, last chance, and most likely we'll get it sold.
Can we declare it surplus?
In essence, yeah. It's abandoned property that we, in essence, own at this point. Zero Chestnut Road, the town has taken this property, about 12,000 square feet, and valued it at about 130K through foreclosure. As you know, there's nothing ever was built on the property, so unlike an abandoned used property, this should be buildable as is. I'm checking with the building inspector on that. I'll get an answer from him, come back to the board, and if that's the case, the board can then make a decision whether it wishes to sell it or not.
Where is Chestnut?
It's in the Anna One Drive.
Anna One Drive. It's off of 36.
Eagle Scout Project, Peck McBack benches at Hops. Eagle Scout Kenny Ryan McCarthy will be in to meet with the board on the 25th about his proposal to install Peck's style benches underneath the proposed gazebo at Hops, and Hops indicated it's in favor of the proposal. Let's see, you have a proposed disclosure form from Robert Frithrilling as he owns, along with Mr. Melius, has an interest in Paradise Properties, which they plan on having developed. He is said that he would like to recuse himself from any of the permitting for this because of this conflict of interest. The board can agree with this, and then I think also needs to indicate to him what should be done in order to have a clean permitting process, in the sense of is the board going to use the assistant building inspector? Is the board going to hire a special inspector for permitting for this property?
I believe the board has to hire outside, not somebody that reports to the building inspector.
I have to agree with that.
I'm going to recuse myself, so...
Well, if the board would like, I can contact the same person who dealt with the zoning issue, determination, I think it was for the farmhouse.
Farmhouse.
The farmhouse a few months ago, and see if he would be willing to serve as a special building inspector for this property.
I would think I'd do you the best bet.
If that's okay, then what, let's see. We need, under determination, have the board authorize Troy to sign on behalf of the board. And I'll write that in as to what the plan is.
Is there a movement?
I move.
Just a...
Second it, all in favor? Aye, I want to abstain.
We are, proposed disclosure. Yeah. Peck back tax update. The board a couple of weeks ago had asked what, we had a spreadsheet that had a $44,563.96 figure on it. That was taxes for the property that the town had previously foreclosed on, so that was no longer being owed by anybody associated with the pecs. In addition, back taxes for the RJ properties are fully paid. The remaining taxes are with the Peck Family Trust totaling $21,820.8, and a payment plan has been established with the town collective treasury. GATRA, the regional transit agency is interested in having Halifax become a member. The town's MBTA assessment would be transferred to GATRA for value loss of the train service. I'd recommend that the board ask representatives from GATRA and the council in aging to meet with the selectmen at a future meeting to discuss this possibility.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, Plimpton's already approved it, so...
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, it took a long time to get GATRA to come around to this, so...
We have a 7:50 appointment with Mr. Sexton. The box man.
That's me. Do you want to come up front?
You've got the floor.
Rick, so essentially, first I'll go to the letter that I sent last month. This is a proposal from the Cub Scout Pack 239. I represent only the Wolf and Lion Den, it's not the entire pack. The Stew Well. The kids on a hike last fall found the Blue Free Library in Pembroke on the Bullbrook Trail, which somebody put about a half mile out in the woods.
Didn't they do the same thing down in Plimpton?
What's that?
Yeah, the same thing in Plimpton.
It's right up in Pembroke. They have safety in Plimpton. They have several in Kingston. We're actually one of the few towns running that doesn't have one. And the kids, after seeing this, went out in the woods, wanted to know if we could build one in Halifax, and so we're proposing that we do just that.
So let's project into the future. How are we going to be sure that somebody will be there to take care of those boxes?
Right, I mean, the, well, it'll be one box for now, and so for the moment, I'm not going anywhere. I mean, I've lived here for 10 years and own a house on Alpook Street, and I've been here for quite a long time. But in terms of maintenance and upkeep on making sure the books are stocked and that kind of thing, that's something that we can do as part of the Cub Scouts community service every year. They actually have a certain number of hours to spend in community service activities and fundraising to either buy books to stock with the library or doing maintenance on the library. That kind of thing can all serve for the community service. So it would be kind of a, every year, the scouts who come in would be invited to participate, and scouts who have already been doing it would continue doing it. So we'd be able to spread the work out among different bands.
Have you talked to the librarian? Our librarian about this?
No, no. It's generally speaking, Blue Free Libraries serve a different purpose than a public library because these books are free to take. They aren't, it isn't a lending library in that sense. So this is for people who actually want to be able to take a book away with them or drop off books they're no longer using. So it's, in many cases, libraries actually maintain these themselves as a way of getting rid of surplus stock.
What happens when you have an overflow? Often we'll be checked, make sure that's not...
Right.
...timbers in the ground.
I mean, honestly, that'd be a delightful problem to have. I'm more concerned with the possibility of having to restock the thing periodically. But if that comes up, generally, the books go directly into the box, and if there's no room, then there's no room. It's not a drop-off spot, it's not like a donation box. This is a, I sent pictures of what these look like. Sort of, it's a box about yea high, yea wide, with a door on it, and so people can either put bought books in or take books out. Generally speaking, they don't fill up because they're more likely to have books taken out of them, in which case we'd be restocking it periodically. But if it fills up, then it's a delightful problem to have, and I'll be able to restore the books and wait for there to be room in the box for them.
Gordon?
I have a motion to approve.
There's no reason not to.
Chief, you had questions in terms of the location.
Yeah, I just, so I looked at the map, you sent me the pictures. So you're proposing to, in the corner, inside the fence area that's there?
Yeah, possibly even, possibly even on the fence post would be a spot for it. But also, we could put a post in if necessary.
That's fine. And the, these things, weatherproof?
Yeah, well, I mean, just when, I'll be building it along with the boys.
Yeah, I don't want...
But there are blueprints, you can get online, so they can use things, make them weatherproof. I've also, if you want to come by 180, I've got a shed that I put up, but so far it's a naked. Been there about two years, so hopefully...
No, I think it's a great idea. I know, like, like he says, up at Towns Avenue, I've seen him, you know, around. It's a great idea, especially, you know, to kind of increase the, you know, the reading opportunity for people that, you know...
Right, right.
So, yeah, I'm, that's not really sure there. It's not in the way of any of our vehicles, and it's, you know, it's actually, the white little corner there, so this is actually a tree there, so that'd be a quite a perfect spot.
Nice spot to build a park if you want to.
Yeah, like a little bench there, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so what are we going to do with iPhones?
If you want to drop those off, too, that's fine.
I mean, the people are so bent over looking at their phone, they're not going to see the bill, the library.
Well, if they're driving fast, they shouldn't be.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
But if they're walking fast, hopefully they'll catch their eye. I'm sure we'll, you know, we'll, the kids will come up with a color scheme to catch the eye.
Well, I personally think it's a good project. You don't have any questions? You moved it?
I moved it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Let's see, Area 58 contract renewal. I put this on the agenda just, we're, what is it, seven months away, I believe, from ending the current contract of Area 58. I know that Tom had an interest specifically about the renewal process. I do know where the board wanted to go with this.
We still never met with them. I'd still like to do that and/or the cable committee.
Okay, so invite both Area 58 and the cable committee.
Yeah. My issue is the disclosure on the bills.
Right, well, that's...
I know it's a Comcast issue, right?
Yeah, and so we're going to have a public hearing with Comcast later, late this winter, early this spring, which would be a separate matter than the agreement.
Well, maybe we wait for that first, and at least that's what I'd like to do.
Gordon?
I'm fine with that. I know Tom wants Comcast to come in and explain the bill, so you can use this as a reason to get them to come in finally.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'll start off...
They don't want to do it at all.
Yeah, we'll start off with Comcast. We'll start off with Comcast and.
Senator invitation.
Yeah, well, we'll get it set up for a date. Building Facility Needs Committee, following individuals who are interested, the council of aging director, library director, police chief, fire chief, principal assessor, and the town accountant. I'd recommend confirming with the Finance Committee and the Municipal and School Building Committee. We'd like to have representatives on this committee in addition to the.
Yes.
Okay, I know, I believe, we have a couple of people from the Building Committee here who might want to indicate whether there's any interest from the Building Committee in serving. I'll contact the Finance Committee.
Why, I'm sure one of the committees will be on a committee, but it's a committee that's going to do what the Building Committee's already done. And everybody that's going to be on that new committee is a, like the chief here, is an automatic member of our committee anyways when we're working on that building. So it's just a duplication. Do your own thing.
I think the intent is for a committee to focus on nothing but one thing. And to keep it as broad as possible and try to drag in as many, not drag in, that's probably not a good word. Try to entice in as many people as possible to have a broader base of support if we come up with a plan. That, that was the intent of that. And I, and I think that's helpful, at least that's my opinion anyway.
By spreading it out that way, having others on it, that, no disregard for you, is that they have different followings, in contact with different people that may help to spread the word and get better support at town meeting. And we start talking about some of these projects.
I'd like to get somebody from Youth and Rec as well.
Gord?
I think you need to expand the group so that you get buy-in from everyone. If we're going to look at a town-wide project, I think you need to get everybody in so that they have a vote.
Invest as many people as possible.
So what I'll, I mean, I'll send a formal note to the Building Committee and you can figure out who you'd like to have serve on this. And I'll also contact Finance and Youth and Rec. In the meantime, would like, would the board like to appoint these initial six term to, you know, open term for the moment at least?
Start the, start the process.
Open term for the six years that it's going to take.
I'll second that.
Never ending. All in favor?
All right.
I think Troy.
Okay, it's eight o'clock and we have Youth and Rec Commission, town facility used by non-residents.
Youth and Rec in parks. Right, we had, had a couple of non-residents come in to meet with the board selectmen during the fall. One was a non-resident taxpayer, another one was a non-resident, non-taxpayer. But both indicated they had an interest in using the Lincoln Street Beach area. We don't, unlike other communities, we don't have a system set up to allow non-residents to use that facility or both, both ramp and the beach area. Let's see, was Duxbury, Kingston, they were processing place. Because we never had, it's never been popular enough that anybody's shown any interest in doing so. So, before we got into summer, I wanted to invite the Parks Commission, Youth and Rec in for a discussion about whether it would make sense for the town to set up a similar system or simply say, sorry, no, we're just going to be a town resident-only facility.
I don't see anybody here from Youth and Rec.
I did invite them.
Did you say you didn't see anybody youthful, is that what you said, Troy? There are some youthful people up there.
Unlike the old politicians.
Yeah, that's it. You have John for Parks?
I don't know what you want to do with this, to set up a permit. Maybe twenty-five years ago, when the beach was very popular, we had four lifeguards, we had a hundred and fifty kids that would take swim lessons there during the summer and everything. We had a large problem because there was no stake boat ramp. And that boat ramp was used a lot. We would have fistfights down there, who was going to put their boat in? They'd be coming through, through the ropes and everything else. And, and we used the town sticker, we had a town sticker, like we do at the recycle today. Because the Lake Street Beach is used very rarely by almost nobody because of the pond water situation. Not many people swim there anymore. I'm sure a few people use the boat ramp, I don't know. I don't see why we have to get into a permit system, why can't we use a permit? Little later to be out of time of stating that you can use the beach until we get any type of a problem and we have to get the police involved. Without collecting a fee or anything, because how much money are you going to collect? You had a ten dollar fee, your money had ten people, that's a hundred bucks. It's going to cost you a lot more than that just to run that fee situation.
Well, this past summer, the beach was full just about every day that the sun was out. And one of the issues was that we had our police officers going out there kicking people off the beach. And, you know, because they didn't want residents of the town. So.
Yeah, no, I'll do a lot of enforcement there.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't know if I want to go to a permit system either, but it might make it easier for law enforcement to deal with the people that they're sitting on the beach. And they got a permit, rather than have them come in and, well.
Well, you could just, no outside, town people use it.
Well, we got to sign up. Sign up there now, it said, no out-of-town people, just, it says for Halifax residents only. And the people still don't pay attention to it.
Well, you know, if we have to enforce it, then it's up to the chief, I guess, how we would want to take care of the permitting process to do that or just use the town sticker that we have for recycle.
Not, not everybody, yeah.
You have a sticker.
Not everybody has.
Who would issue the, the stickers or the, the, the pond master?
Is that an official title? If not, we should put.
Yeah, I like Pond Master, Pond Master sounds good. I like that. It's sort of like grasshopper. Pond Master, Pond Master, I like that.
This is our police chief and Pond Master? Does Al issue a fine if they're there?
No, I, I, he's given parking tickets there, but I think this past year, it was mainly, listen, you're not a resident, you have to leave. I know that he, he was, he was busy up there this past summer. So it might be something that we need to, to look at again.
Yeah, it's, it's something we should think about. I, I, I think about the extra liability too, which is not anything small.
I'm open to a twenty-five dollar permit for Halifax, especially for the couple that came before us that said that they pay taxes in town, but the house isn't technically in town, so they're not residents.
Right.
What about, I mean, one we could look at, see where the work Duxbury has, has an out-of-town fee for people to pay when they want to use the beach area and stuff, see, see if, see if facts check with them.
That kind of makes sense too, because otherwise.
Well, at least there's some benefit being got.
People are going to use it anyway and.
Unless we pull somebody down there on a bench, stop everybody coming in, says, you live here?
We spend more than twenty-five dollars an hour on policing, so. If they don't, if they don't have the permit, have the police officer issue the permit for twenty-five bucks.
The other big problem was they were put, they were parking down the boat ramp road on the side.
We could have. What? Sinister, what is? To check the stickers and stuff.
Maybe we let the Park Commission and the chief talk about it outside and come back to us.
While we table this and let him talk about it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to, to see Senator Duxbury and find out, you know, if he.
See if there's an easy enough way to do it, or if it's just not viable or what.
Or if there's, I mean, I think, I'm not sure, Duxbury has a seasonal ticket. You buy, you buy, you buy the sticker, it's good for the summer season. Am I right on that, Bert?
I think so.
Yeah, Duxbury has a, I mean, they have a problem that, that there's more people that want to buy that sticker than they've been.
Do residents.
Because they can't fit them on the beach.
Yeah.
I mean, they haven't entirely given, and there's a lot of money for that sticker.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's three hundred bucks.
They can pour it up on the beach down there. Because I know, I know people are trying to get them and it's kind of like you pass them on to your family almost, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, I can foresee, like, if, if the water quality stays, stays as it was last year and it progressively gets better, you're going to probably see more people utilizing the beach. So that, this problem could, you know, could get a lot out of hands, you know, if we can get to it first, establish something, sort of policy on it.
We, we don't maintain it per se anymore, do we? Years ago, we used to bring in sand and create a little.
Yeah, but we never really asked for any, we asked for four hundred and fifty dollars a year, just if we had to have some money to do something.
Yeah.
But we maintain it through the maintenance department in Highway. In Highway, they get down there, clean the beach up, they inspected if there's glass on the beach or things like that. So it's, it's.
Basic.
Just keeping it clean, that's it. And we put the boys out, boys out there out in the summer. So if there is a swimming area that boats can't go into. I really didn't realize that they had that many people using the beach.
Oh, dude. I go, I go by it. They just park all over the place.
Sargass, Boston, all over the place, Stowe.
I think if I was coming after, I'd find a lot better.
Yeah, I was just thinking that, Sean, you're right.
Okay, so at this point in time, you want to table this until they get their heads together.
Come up with something that makes some sense.
Yeah, that's something for the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
A few other things for Area Fifteen, just the Ragnar events, has a road race scheduled for May eighth through Halifax with an exchange point at elementary school. This is a relay race, there are teams of runners that, you know, will run a few miles and somebody else takes over. I think a track race with a baton, but it's a much longer race over a couple of days. The group's scheduled to meet with the selectmen on the 25th. I am now to find the chiefs, since obviously if there are any public safety concerns, we need to deal with that. The school's fine with it, they're going to be using the school parking lot, it'll be after school closes that day, so there won't be a problem there. Talked about the library, little free library, we're going to get to Bud's Goods in a couple of minutes. On John Peck, on the earth removal permit, on behalf of his father, Joseph Peck's filed an application for earth removal permit. The hearing is scheduled for March tenth. I'll need to postpone the hearing with the clerk magistrate up at the district court, which is now scheduled for March ninth, so I put that in. As part of the application process, Mr. Peck's required to request the following waivers. There'll be different requests for waivers in connection with the actual work, it's already obviously been done. He's asked for the following waivers, a list of names and addresses for all budding property owners within three hundred feet, including those across any streets that's taken the most recent tax lists certified by the assessors. He's asked for a waiver as all the work has already been completed. He's asked for a waiver of the plan of land showing the two foot contours since the material was taken out of the pond, so the contours aren't changing in the area. We're in proof from the town collectors, no one paid taxes. Request a waiver there as the payment plan's in place to pay all the taxes within, I don't know if the three-month period's correct, but I know that there is a payment plan in place. Road map showing how the material will be removed from the property, the number and size of the truck loads each day. He's asked for a waiver as the work is complete and the majority of the material was brought to the budding properties. Before I can formally set the hearing up, the board needs to decide whether to waive the above items.
I, I can't see not waiving, I mean, everything's done, there is no, no point in getting in a butters list if, I mean, other than if we're going to have a hearing, but.
You'll need a hearing.
Yeah, so that is fine.
Which, when you say fine.
What I'm saying is that, you know.
We should not waive?
We should not waive that, yes, that's what I'm trying to say, Charlie, thank you. As far as the other ones go, I don't see anything to be gained by.
The only thing about seven would be to prove from the previous plans that it was only the work done. They only removed the material from the pond versus other places.
No, except that the, given the interval, probably it's been fifteen or twenty years since the previous earth removal, it wouldn't surprise me that the land has changed, not necessarily because the material's been removed off property, but simply re-rating around those areas.
But I, I would think that we should have that, then, showing what, what it is now. And I wouldn't want to waive seven.
That be his plan here, I mean, wouldn't you say you have to do what?
Oh, yes, I don't know if it shows the two or four contours or not, you know.
No, I think it was.
But he listed, he noted on the application that he wanted that waived. So I took it, I didn't look at the plan to see if.
I didn't know what was.
Well, it's going to cost them, the engineer to go and get the contours, land, everything, right? I think that's probably why they're looking for a waiver.
Two cubic yards, is that what that is?
That's what it stands for, yeah.
Four hundred and forty-one yard yards.
Lineal feet.
But this is, the, the numbers that they showed us was more than a thousand, so I don't think this is a true number.
Or.
Right?
Depends on what the plan is supposed to be showing. What is the reference? Is, is this since the last?
Yeah, that's the same one I had.
The same?
It's all we have. I don't know if it shows, you know, if it's current conditions, whether, I mean, the conditions shouldn't have changed specifically because of this, if the material was taken from the pond.
Well, this is as of two five nineteen.
So it would be as of right now?
Yes, well, a year ago.
Nineteen?
Yeah, nineteen.
I think the material was taken out even before.
Yeah, it was taken out in fifteen, wasn't it?
Well, no, I think like in eighteen.
Well, I have, I have a letter from country.
When was the material?
It's, it's just dated eight twenty two thousand nineteen. Thompson Street between May eighteenth two thousand eighteen and September twenty-first two thousand eighteen.
So that plan would be for after the material was taken out.
But there's been material since then, right?
No. Because that, the letter we received is for the material, the, was all basis for the board making the fine. So there's been, at least unless someone make, wants to make a claim on it.
No, 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 I, I just lost track of the time, that's all.
I just think it would make sense if we had, had a plan that showed it, because if they take more material out in the future, we'll have nothing to compare it against, which is what we came up with over the summers, we had nothing to compare it with.
The material came out of the pond, right?
That's what we've been told.
That's what we've been told.
I, I, how do you do a contour map of below the water?
Well, if you had a contour map coming up to it, at least then we know what it is for the future.
If you're saying establish a baseline, I can go along with that.
Yeah, well, isn't that what that's doing?
I thought, thought that's what he was talking about, what came out, right?
Well, I'm just not, the plan's showing two-foot contours, I was, I would expect to see contours.
No, I don't see any numbers on there, I don't see any elevations.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. He's asking us to waive that, I don't think we should waive that, because I think we should know what the contours are.
I think we need to be extremely sure of what we're asking them to do first. Maybe we contact the engineer, get permission from him to contact the engineer and make sure we're getting what we're talking about.
Well, surely that is not what's one of the requirements on the list of an application, which shows the contours. And that's not doing that. And we don't have that. And if you're saying, yes, I mean, if, if it was what is what's listed on the requirement list, then a waiver wouldn't be needed. Since he's asking for the waiver, he doesn't want to submit that. If the board's saying instead, yes, we want you to submit the plan as described in the list of requirements, then you're not granting the waiver and we go from there.
My feelings is that if he had filled out the proper paperwork in the first place, we would, we would be asking for the same, same information. So if we're going to look to ask us to waive those facts, it's not fairly anybody else who followed the process properly and had to turn that information in. it's not fair to anybody else who followed the process properly and had to turn that information in.
I, I think you could, if they're not gonna remove any of the material, I think you could okay waiving ten and B.
Yeah, I, I.
But I don't think we should waive the first two.
I, I, I'll go along with the fact there isn't enough information on his plan, so, you know, I'd be okay with that.
So if we're to take a formal vote not to waive number five and seven, and I'll inform Mr. Peck about that and tell him as part of the application.
Or to only, only waive, um.
Only, you're only waiving ten and B.
Yeah.
Did you make it a second?
I'll, I'll make it.
On second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I believe you have your eight fifteen.
How deep is the weed?
Good evening, good evening.
Okay, so this is set up.
Have you set up residents in town yet?
No, sir, not yet, I was gonna build on.
Well, you're here. Yeah, as much as you're here, you might.
I should have a rental home in Halifax, but my community's forty acres.
So it's been reviewed by Bud's Goods, it's been reviewed by the town council, so if the board wants to make a decision tonight as to signing or not signing the host community agreement, it's been, you know, all the factors that were brought in by the board, by Bud's.
There's been no major changes from the last time I've been at this?
There've been no changes from two weeks ago now.
How's the board feeling?
You got a resident, I think that wants to speak on it, folks, before we.
Um, I, so I apologize, I didn't send this in earlier, I know the last time we had the HCA, I sent in some questions, comments and stuff beforehand, but I've just been busy, so, I did get a chance to read it, so can I, can I just ask the board what your, yeah, I'm assuming you're in favor of the HCA's written, so can I just ask what the stance is as to why you're supportive of it?
It's a liable business in the town. They had, uh, other than yourself, there would have been any major, you know, objections to the property going there, the property's gonna lay feral, they could put anything on that property, industrial or private, so why not put one on the business that's fairly clean, realizing there may be some odor or something involved in it? But I find that it's, I can't say it's not offensive, because I'm not living in the area, but it does, it seems on the surface that it's a good fit.
Troy touched on it, for me, I mean, it's a legal use. The last people who came in and expressed any interest on that particular property were looking to park a thousand cars preparing to go to auction. I, I don't find that particularly attractive, uh, and it's industrial zoned. I think this is the best possible use that we can expect for it. Um, you know, there may be some inconvenience at certain times of the years, and I'm not insensitive to that. But on whole, our obligation is to work in the best interests of the entire community. And the financial implications are, are.
Yeah, so can we, I would like to talk about that a little bit, because do you, I, I mean, in the contract, to me, is a little bit confused, because it states the three percent and it speaks in actualities, but there's a section in here that relates to the law which states that the costs have to be attributable to, uh, the.
Cost of the town?
Yes, so by your own admission, from the last time we went through this, there were no costs to the town. And the argument against that before was that the CCC didn't have the ability or the desire to enforce the law as written, that those costs had to be relatable. That's since changed, so the CCC has voted to, uh, and put forth a bill that the House has passed that will give the CCC the ability to review the HCA's and strike out anything that is against the law as written, which part of it is reasonably related to the facility and also that the costs associated have to be documented for public consumption. So do you have a plan for what those costs will be to, to poof the three percent that is written in the, in the contract?
I haven't totally reviewed any new legislation, this is actually the first I've made aware of that, I probably want to look at that. But at the end of the day, again, we're talking about a legal use.
Sure.
On a piece of industrial property, regardless of the financial implications. The other possibilities, now granted, nobody's been running forward lately to try to use this property, but at some point, the owners are going to want to do something with this property as evidenced by the fact they're trying to sell it.
Sure.
Um, so, you know, I'm not a big fan of marijuana, trust me. However, again, it, it is a legal use, I, I, I think they've got a plan, they seem to have a track record. Uh, it's no different than taking, uh, a major shopping center for, for what it's worth. Um, I, I feel the need to support it.
Have you done any research as to the impact to the surrounding homes? I mean, as you know, the, the area down there isn't the way it used to be, there's been a tremendous amount of growth down there in residential homes. Have I, if any, has anybody been to Vermont recently and experienced hemp farms at all, or? Have you done any research in, from Colorado or Washington or California on, you know, potential lawsuits that are out there or issues that they're having with voters?
I haven't. We do have in the, late at the final draft, stipulations concerning the nuisance problem.
Could you, like, do you, like, the COs?
Yeah, sure.
Can I speak to this now?
Can, can, let me deal with it.
One moment.
So. We put in a new section, Bud's Goods, and I don't want, it's a page long, and I apologize how much people want me to be reading about this. But Bud's Goods agrees to work collaboratively and cooperatively with the town and adjacent property owners, including property owners within six hundred feet of the premises. To address and mitigate any reasonable concern or issue that may arise as a result of marijuana establishment, including but now limited to odor, noise, light and visual impacts. In the event the town receives three or more complaints from an adjacent property owner within a two week period with respect to substantially the same type of negative impact emitting from the premises, and the parties agree the following protocol will be followed. And then the town can investigate its own with public safety, public health and such, to investigate complaints. After a file inspection report, the town can hold a meeting with Bud's, um, to further review the complaints. It can continue to take inspections, require independent measures of light, sound and odors be taken. Um, the mitigation measures may include reduction in the amount of outdoor canopy for next growing season, relocation of outdoor growing operations to a less intrusive location on the property, enclosure of marijuana cultivation operations in a greenhouse instead of just outdoors, inflammation of odor, light or noise control processes or technologies reasonably calculated to address the specific nature of the complaints, and any other mitigation measures as deemed appropriate. If we can't, um, reach an agreement on that, then, um, we will engage a third party mediator to assist and facilitate a agreed upon resolution, cost of which would be borne by Bud's Goods and offset against the community impact fee. Um, we'd have to agree on the third party mediator and such. Um, so we understood, you know, given the outdoor cultivation is a different setup than what, if it was four daughters had indicated, and the potential for outdoor cultivation might cause problems for the abutters, that we've looked at agreements in other communities, Massachusetts, and so incorporated that.
Then I believe that that language is pulled from the Truro HCA. The Truro outdoor grow is forty five hundred square feet, what's the size of this proposed?
We're proposing eight tier ten that would potentially reach a hundred thousand square feet.
Okay, so forty five hundred, that's, and that was the six hundred foot area, I don't think there are any residents within six hundred feet of the location, so that is completely useless to any of others.
Well, it depends on, I mean, we don't know from experience yet how far away the odors are coming from.
Right, but, but if Truro's willing to put in six hundred feet for forty five hundred square feet, and we're looking at a potential hundred thousand square foot, isn't it safe to assume that the six hundred feet probably isn't sufficient, given that nobody falls within that?
I don't know, I don't know what would be sufficient.
We're also on a forty seven acre parcel of land, and what we're proposing is four percent, utilizing four percent of that entire parcel for growing purposes. So a hundred thousand square feet's about two, two acres, and so, you know, we would, we're strategically planning to design it so that it is as far as it can be from residences.
Will it be, secondly, if there will be no processing except for the harvest, the plants?
Correct, packaging or removal.
So there's, there's no manufacturing on the property?
We are not, uh, we had a, we are not processing it down to oil in Halifax.
That's taking place in Lakeville, correct?
Correct, or to whoever else we sell it by a mast.
So is the six hundred feet, is there, if that's for forty five, is it a percentage?
If you were, if you were bringing it to a hundred thousand, just on a straight percentage basis, you're like two and a half miles, which is probably excessive. But still, the six hundred in the contract is useless, because there's nobody that falls within the six hundred. So I agree with everything that Truro did, because it gives the residents who will be potentially impacted in inlet to have a complaint and have a formal process, and it, you know, brings in the option of a third party mediator. But if nobody falls within that and there's a problem.
That doesn't mean that we as a board, whoever sits up here doesn't listen to what the residents have to say.
So my concern, and I'll give you, it seems like a stupid example, but I'll give it to you anyway. I went to three separate meetings for the solar field off of River Street, and there were several of us who live on River Street that had gone, we asked the same question in all three meetings, what was your plan for lights? They told us that there was going to be a single light at the entrance that was motion sensor. There are two dawn to dusk, no, dusk to dawn post lights, one at the front and one at the back. So forgive me if I'm untrustworthy of what is said and not in writing.
Well, it was in the site.
Was it in the site?
Yeah, I mean, it's getting off the subject, but if you have a complaint that the site plan was not followed, that's something that we can bring to the building inspector.
I just don't see, I mean, if you're going to put that language in, which I believe is helpful for the residents, why not expand it to a, a usable distance? What, there's no point in having the six hundred if it doesn't impact anybody. The entire section can be thrown out because nobody falls within it. So you're, you're affording us no written protection in the event that it actually impacts us.
I, I think it rightly states that if it causes any nuisance or inconvenience to any of the abiding properties, that they can speak up and the town would have to address that, regardless of the six hundred feet. And to be very honest, these distances are just picked out of, out of a hat right now in Massachusetts, so to use that as a proportion in general, really, there's no validating evidence.
We're almost making my case for me, if there's, if everybody's picking out of the hat, nobody knows, wouldn't it?
What I'm saying is that the validation and the protection for the residents in the host community agreement is the fact that it's nuisance in general, regardless of distance.
Is it limited to the abutters, because who are the technical abutters, isn't it just the solar fields?
Well, anybody within three hundred feet of any part of the property are butters.
So again, nobody falls within that. But those of us that live on River Street and Wood Street and Pratt Street and on the south end of Thompson Street, you know, there's no tree barrier there, we don't know how it's gonna impact us. So what good to the town if the town can't collect the three percent, because we don't have a plan on the impact, and all of the residents in that area lose the use of their residence for a good portion of the summer months, spring months, early fall months, what have you?
Well, then, I guess the thing then is present the board with an alternative. If you don't like the six hundred, what's the number?
Mile and a half, that covers Wood Street.
Oh, I'm sorry, a mile and a half?
Pratt Street.
So we're talking seventy five hundred feet instead of six hundred?
Whatever, yeah, I don't.
Okay, I just.
The, the radius of, um, a mile and a half, whatever covers Wood Street.
So seventy five hundred feet surrounding the property, seventy five hundred feet from the actual growing area? What's the distance, what are the points of the distance?
You put me on the spot for, I don't have a map in.
Well, no, no, but I, but I mean, in a sense of, if so, if we're, I'm not, what I'm, I mean, I'm not asking the board has to make a decision tonight, what I am saying is that if we were going to implement something like that, we have to figure out what we're implementing, in that, so if we're talking about a forty seven acre parcel, and there are only a portion of that is grown, being grown on, then it makes a difference how you're measuring distance. So, so seventy five hundred feet from the growing area or seventy five hundred feet from the boundary line?
Whatever distance incorporates those that will reasonably be impacted, which is inclusive of River Street, which, through Wood Street to Pratt Street and potentially the backside of Thompson Street, would be to me reasonable. And again, I think you had three complaints, if there are fifty houses, we can up to three, so that you don't have three, you know, cranky individuals who are unhappy about it, cause this, you know what I mean? If you expand the area, it makes sense to expand the number of, um, requirements for it, but at the same time, like I said, if there are no technical abutters and the six hundred feet doesn't include anybody, then what good is having the protection in there in the first place? So again.
Well, I don't, because it's saying that in the host community agreement, the distance?
Yes.
Yeah.
Six hundred.
Because we took it from Truro, as he mentioned, yeah.
Because I know we covered abutters. But like I said, there's forty seven acres, the whole notion was we were going to strategically try to place it to mitigate it being even potentially visible from a real street.
I think Len's concern is really more the smell.
It's just the smell, because like I said, I've been to Vermont, which the hemp business has exploded up there, and you drive by a hemp farm on the side of the highway, and it reeks for miles, two to three miles, it absolutely stinks. So, you know, that's my concern, if it stinks bad enough and I can't, I can't sell my home, I've just lost my life savings. We've all lost our life savings. And like I said, it's not the seventies, there are a great number of houses that have been built over there in the last ten years. So, again, I, I don't, I, I understand your reasoning, I, I think that originally it was financial, I don't see a path for the finances to actually work, especially now that the CCC is pushing for control over the HCA's, which I think is misguided, because I think the communities need incentive, and if you're taking that incentive away, then.
Well, the only thing the CCC has got, has been granted access through the house was the notion that they can control whether an HCA is abusive and exceeds the three percent. They are not, they are not.
They can strike any portion that they find isn't lawful, and you have a section there about a hundred thousand dollar payment upfront. The whole point of the law is to make it so the barriers to entry for smaller companies, you know, weren't exorbitant, and you're requiring underground upfront, which if I was a lawyer in favor of the marijuana industry, I'd put a junior attorney on it and say, go strike these portions out of here, this is ridiculous. So that's my fear for the town financially, is that we just collect it, you know, stick our collective heads in the sand and hope for the best, and then we wind up having to either get rid of it or they strike it down and we get minimal financial benefit. But again, I, all that aside, I just, we, we who live down there would just like some protection. In the event that it does stink and we lose, I think, what was the growing season, May to September?
Yes.
So I mean, even if half of that reeks, you know, beyond a reasonable amount for the people that live down there, we're gonna lose the use of our homes and the, the only time you'd be outside anyway. So that's all we're looking for.
Okay. Board, do you have any other questions?
I, I would expand the area. So that we encompass the, I mean.
But based on what, like.
The complaints, if, if there's a small complaint, then somebody can go down there.
I mean, I'm happy to come in.
Hold on, hold on, one at a time.
I'm happy to come in and sit and with the board or whomever and Bud's Goods, and we can take a look at a map and see what makes sense. I mean, I'm not saying, you know, if somebody in the opposite corner of town who has a problem with marijuana can file a complaint, have it be valid, I mean, it makes sense to chop it down, but to have six hundred feet or a butters, which is three hundred feet, and have nobody fall within that is pointless, if you're affording us nothing.
What if we said a butters of a butters? Because you put a six hundred foot radius around a forty seven acre parcel, and then most likely requesting that it's going to be boundary line, boundary line to boundary line on a forty seven acre parcel, six hundred feet could become miles and miles of a circumference.
Well, not really, just because the, the.
A five hundred square foot radius.
Excuse me.
The east portion.
Excuse me, hold on. Yeah, I'm just saying, hold on.
I'm, I'm just saying that a five hundred foot circle.
We've established the point that the possibility of extending the area. Is there any other pertinent points that we need to talk about?
Yeah, I'm proposing a butters of a butters, that expands it another two, three hundred feet. But what I'm suggesting is that a five hundred foot distance from property line becomes a two and a half mile circumference circle. So, you know, the ask of a seventy five hundred foot buffer from property line around the forty seven acre parcel, that could easily become, you know, over fifteen or twenty mile radius.
Then, then maybe, that's why I said we, I'm happy to come in and take a look and see what's reasonable. River, river to Wood to Pratt to the. River, river to wood to Pratt to the, the back end of Thompson, within a reasonable.
Okay, Len, we've heard you. Taking notes. But Mr. Board's wishes at this time.
How about you just include the, those streets? Complaint, complaints on, complaints from property owners on those streets?
And if there isn't a smell, which I hope there isn't, cause I don't want to move, I don't want to lose home value, then it shouldn't be an issue.
Do we know where the prevailing winds are there? Is that ever been?
Winds?
Yeah.
No, we have not done any of those things.
I mean, yeah, I even, there's no tree barrier.
Yeah, no, I understand, but.
At all?
We still have prevailing winds, that's.
So you have Riverwood, Pratt and Thompson?
Yeah, and which Thompson stretches for a ways, so, I mean, again, reasonably, it's probably not the entirety of Thompson.
I don't want you to think that I'm, I'm, my, my plan is not to be a nuisance.
No, no, I understand.
I hope none of these discussions are even relevant. That's the goal.
Sure, me, me too. I mean, I live there. Like I said, I don't want to, I'm like, I have a two-year-old at home. I got another one on the way. The last thing I want to do is have to fix them. So I, again, I just, that's all.
I, I also have this. Thought process of dealing with the devil we know as opposed to the devil we don't know. I, I, I understand that some people might be inconvenienced with this, but there are so many more horrific projects that could potentially happen. I mean, it's a, it's a fifteen hundred acre parcel.
Reason, that's no reason to disregard.
But again, it's not like I'm, I'm talking about supporting an illegal use or anything, and I'm not even a particular fan of it. But, you know, it's industrial property and, and I. I mean, everybody knew it was industrial. If they didn't know that it was industrial property, they should have known it was industrial property with the potential of anything happening on it.
Yeah, but again, you don't disregard just because of that reason.
I understand.
I, I'm not opposed, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Uh, Lenny.
Lenny, I'm Alex. I'm not opposed to Lenny's concerns. Um, you know, if there's a way to specify certain, a certain part, a neighborhood, residential neighborhood in that area in the agreement.
Do you want to work on a map?
But, but, well, again, you know, I could look at the community, but I don't know certain aspects of the community.
You're here a lot, right?
I'm here every other week almost. Um, but, you know, we would like to obviously. Move forward because I know there are always what-if scenarios. Um, you know, is it? I, I don't, I really don't know what to propose because this is such a unique, um, ask. Is listing the streets excessive? That, I don't know, I guess.
But yeah, you have, to Lenny's point, you'd have to have some kind of, I mean, Thompson Street goes way into Middleborough.
Well, I don't think Middleborough even has any recourse.
No, I understand, but I mean, it also goes to one oh six.
Right, I guess, which the farthest has, is probably out of the reasonable range.
How about you said?
To Pratt Street or?
To Walnut Street. Cause this is the only one house on that side, right? It's big. So if you did Thompson from Middleborough line, from Thompson to Walnut, you did River Street? Wood Street and Thompson Street?
You said Pratt also.
Pratt, yeah, Pratt's the closest.
Yeah, Pratt's right across, well, across from the solar field, but still in the vicinity.
And a large portion of wood is actually on. The middle wall and anyways.
Wood Street? No. No.
Yeah, that's right.
River Street.
Yeah, yeah, so this, so Middleborough is. Middleborough is here.
While, while you guys are discussing that, are you prepared to sign off on this today? You want to postpone it?
If, if we make this amendment, I'll, I'd vote for it to, to lay out where the area is. I think it needs to be more than six hundred.
How long, just to turn around time?
We should, I mean, if we can come up to an agreement, I don't see why we care for it.
The affected area. We're talking about the effect, potentially affected area, right?
You know, six hundred feet from the property line out is a, is a very large.
I, I think it's just because this, because where it is, there are, there are no trees. There's nothing to stop the, so I think if you put it in there. If we get a complaint, somebody's going to go down and say, it's going to be logged into the, the reporting system that we have for. Somebody goes down and says, yeah, it smells, or, or, you know, it's subjective. Hopefully, we have somebody that can still smell the.
Well, we could do due diligence and have somebody who's, just don't send me.
Yeah, that's why I said somebody that can smell.
Well, we don't want somebody down there all day.
Nothing would happen.
I know, I know, I'm just.
I, I think if you put in there the, those streets, it covers the, that neighborhood. And if there's complaints, then we'll have a hearing. That way it's done, cause that's what you want. You want the agreement settled. So you can move forward, right?
I feel like, you know, every time we come, I come here, another resident can come with another concern and ultimately. You know, I understand these concerns and as a business operator, we're going to do our very best to make sure, you know. Believe me, it doesn't feel good when residents and the municipalities complaining to the business owner. It's not like, we're like, yeah, whatever. You know, that stuff keeps us awake at night. It gives us, you know, that feeling in your stomach you don't want to feel. Um, so obviously we want to do our very best to, you know, if I'm driving to visit the site on a weekly basis and I think it smells, I would raise the alarm probably quicker than anybody else. Um, again, I don't want any resident even acknowledging us there, but I understand the concerns and, you know. If we feel like by adding those streets, we give more entitlement to the residents here, then I think that's fair of the residents to ask. I was under the interpretation of when I read it, that all residents had that freedom and luxury, but I'm happy to specify.
I think the Truro one specifically was set that way so that you didn't have anti-marijuana individuals complaining facelessly.
You're right.
Does, does that work for you?
Yeah, it works for me. That's like I said, it's all we're looking for. We just don't want to lose the use of our homes.
I, I think, I think that's acceptable. I, I, I.
Of course.
What I thought was going on is we were going to have a buffer of some enormous amount to, and to his point, and I'm not. Not vested in the company by any stretch. It does take a whole lot of area out of the, out of the equation.
Especially in forty-seven acres, it's very large.
Yeah.
But.
So, so.
I, I, I support if we list the, those parameters of those streets as a contingency fourteen nights ago.
We, we need to send back the legal. Yeah, well, just we need to go back to the computer and make the changes, but I can get it surely set up for two weeks from now.
Yeah, we got.
So you want to postpone the, the decision on this tonight?
I mean, if, I'd make a motion to approve it with those street listings in there.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, that's better. Otherwise this may get on for record.
Right, every, every time we come.
Right.
I don't have an issue. I hope the residents express their concerns and just have those public hearings and we've provided notice of hearing and. And I understand people are busy more than anyone.
Under those circumstances.
I'll second that. Under those circumstances.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
So I'll get it set up. I'll make the revisions, get it set up for the board to sign during intervening time and give you a call when they do.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I, I look forward to being a part of this community and.
So.
I thought you already were.
I did, uh, Thompson Street from Middleborough to Walnut. So, you know, Pratt Street.
I'm, I'm here.
Wood Street.
Are we alums? Is that what you're talking?
That's why he's here.
Right? Rivers, I said, uh, Walnut to Thompson, Pratt Street, Wood Street, River Street. Correct?
Yep.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Don't judge me because of my industry.
No, no, no. If I was going to do that, I would have said.
No, I think this will be a great use for the parcel of land and they're as indiscreet as a large parcel like this can be, you know.
Well.
The seasonality, I think, works in its benefit, is my view.
I, I, I've lived in the town for forty years and I've driven up and down that street and it's probably the most pleasant drive around. Especially in the, in the nicer months.
Yep.
And, and, you know, every time something threatens to go in there, it's always a, you know. But then you have to keep in mind that somebody owns this property and as long as we still have property rights.
Right. And we, and I, and we still have a huge process to go through.
Okay, okay, okay.
Sorry, sorry, I'm taking your time.
They want, they want her asleep. So do I. Yes. Um, Gator legislation, just so the board's aware, uh, the bill is making progress. It's now in the House on the third reading. Um, Aldana Road, the purchase and sale agreement of Plymouth County is ready for signature. I'm still waiting for the Article ninety-seven language from the Commonwealth, but. This is purely between the town and the county and not involving DFW or the state, so I don't know whether the board's ready to go ahead with this or not.
Well, here's the problem. If we buy it.
Yes.
And the state doesn't fund it, then we, we own it, but we don't get the money.
Correct.
So I, I don't know. Personally, I'd like to wait and make sure that they're going to get their money.
Well, it makes it so if they want the money too, that they can help push, the commissioners can help push the legislature to get it done.
Right, right. If they want the property.
Okay, so I mean, the, the only thing on this is obviously. Whereas we've seen with the Gainer legislation, which is probably simpler in many respects. It may, we might get a draft tomorrow or next week of the Article, but we won't get the legislation approved. By the state probably for several months. So are we, I just want to be able to tell the other buyers, are we going to not sign this until legislation's approved?
I, I don't want to sign it until legislation's approved.
I, I don't either. I mean.
Okay, I just need to, I need to tell.
Number one, we'll have to come up with.
Cause I, cause the county's ready to sign.
Sign their names?
Well, we just tell them, you know, we were absolutely going to do this and they want the money too.
Yeah, okay.
So, and I don't see any other buyers for this little property.
I, I mean, if you tell the county commissioners that we need help pushing it.
Yeah, we'll get some support from them, yeah.
Okay. Um, I don't have anything else, PM?
All politics is local, isn't it?
Pardon?
I just needed to sign.
Okay. Um, I have no necessity to go into executive session tonight.
So, we're going to talk about the discussion of the joint school town maintenance position?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's the only other.
I didn't, if I don't put something in the folder, it can get on the agenda, but I don't even.
So currently right now, um, the head custodian at the elementary school was chosen to be. The facilities manager at Silver Lake for the district. So he's leaving that position. There's a possibility of the town taking over control of the building itself. The school hiring another janitor to work in the building day to day, but not, but not be. Um, responsible for alarms and all those sorts of.
Maybe a lead custodian, I think is what the.
Like team, yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
Basically what we have before we had not.
Yeah.
So you want a building man, you're not going to be a building manager, you're just going to be maintenance.
So, so he wouldn't be the head custodian? Yeah.
Right.
So the, the issue comes up that, so we're in negotiations with the union right now for the custodians, for the support. So if we're going to move forward with this, with the department head taking over the. I don't know, what would you, what would you call it? The, the control of the building?
True, it's true.
Well, you're talking, you're talking the department, uh, Scott here.
Yeah.
Uh, taking over the control of all our fourteen buildings plus the school.
Yeah.
What you're going to have to do is you're going to have to give us more people in the maintenance department. Because he's going to become a full-time, uh, director. He's not like Scott's a worker now. And if he, I mean, we went, we went through this two or three years ago when the school was before that rehab.
Yeah.
Because they had nobody in control of the maintenance over there. And we went through it for what, six, eight, ten months, meet with the school committee, cause then we were dealing with unions. But now I've been to be union in the town too, so that would be. But then the school voted to hire a separate person because not only. Does he take on a larger responsibility? He's got to take, he's not going to do it for the money we're paying him now.
Right.
So.
That was always the intent was to adjust.
Point at the school, if, if at that time was Jerry was going to take on the school. Uh, what's the word?
Responsibilities?
Responsibilities, then he, he or she or whoever it is should be paid for.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, it's a big job. It's, it's, it's not something that, uh. I mean, we, you know, our maintenance department is overwhelmed now with what we try to do. And if we take on that building too, uh, just the responsibility of giving orders, that that holds a lot of responsibility.
Well, I think we should, I personally think it's a valid idea. I think it has merit. Um, I don't think the present situation is going to be easily replaced over there. I, I think we, as a town, we're very fortunate to have a very engaged individual over there. Um, who put a lot of effort into it. I think those people are getting harder to find. Uh, I have a tremendous amount of confidence in Scott. Um, and I think we should, um, sit down and try to work out a plan here to make it work and see, well, see if we can make it work. Obviously, we're going to have to make some adjustments, um, in terms of personnel or finances or whatever, but I think it has enough merit that we should pursue it.
So, would it be a joint meeting between the school committee and the selectmen and ask building committee to come in?
Yeah.
And Scott and have Matt be it and talk about what the roles.
His roles are and, and, and Scott.
Who else would you be, would you be?
To talk about what he thinks that his, his needs would be and additional needs.
At least a member of the finance committee.
Yeah.
And to make sure we have the school committee superintendent and the building principal.
I think Lenny said he wanted to go back on.
Oh, he's still here.
How do you feel about that, John?
What's that? I'm sorry.
Having a joint meeting with the school committee ourselves, uh, you, you folks or whoever you want to delegate.
We have, I have a meeting next week and we can talk to Scott and, and just, we're behind.
Yeah, you should work out what you think you need on that end. I'm going to be away next week, but I'd like to be, uh, involved in this, but.
I, I, I think financially it makes sense and gives the. I have the most respect for Scott, so Matt did a great job and that's why I think he got the promotion to the facilities manager. So I think by having Scott take over the responsibilities, we know that we have somebody good in charge. That will maintain the building for after all the money you spent.
So I don't need, I don't need to praise Scott. You guys have already done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Two out of three, two out of twelve.
You're giving too much here. You know, we have to deal with them a little more. I, I, and it makes, it makes sense to have some, one entity to, in charge of all our buildings. I, I, I like the whole concept.
Cause we did, we did have a problem with the region though, didn't we?
I was on finance committee then.
Okay.
No, it's, no, when you were talking about Jerry going over and taking it, I was promoting that because the building was not being maintained.
Right.
And I talked about, uh, changing the bylaw so that the town took over control of the building.
Well, we, we had.
That was a possibility back then.
When we had new sprinkler systems and everything, that was one of the main. Ooh-hahs with that nobody was, you can take note of the different discrepancies that were going on in the building so they can be repaired. So having one individual to report, one responsible individual. To report and take care of, makes it a lot easier to have one person to go through than you have to go through a whole committee.
Cause we can take those kinds of things out of the school budget, right?
Yeah, so there's, there's a question, there's a financial question over whether or not the position would get a stipend out of the school. And, and the department head here and having to regrade that position as well.
For the additional responsibility.
So.
But that's, those are the things we can work out. Those are the things we need to work out.
I'm definitely open to it and I think it's a good idea.
Uh, I.
I don't have a problem with it.
Would, would the selectman be able to go to the next school committee meeting, the first Monday in March?
Why do you want to torture us?
Yeah, I can do that.
Why do you want to torture us like that?
Well, I'm going to be there anyways.
That's what it means.
And I did ask you to go to Thursday night too, so. Is that global?
Yeah, but in the meantime, we can talk with building and.
We'll talk at all Tuesday then.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, okay. Anything further?
Thank you, guys.
We're good. Thank you. We're good, thank you.
Or is there anything else I missed on your agenda?
Um, Harrison, unregistered.
Yeah, no, there's no progress, I, I told him that, uh, we need the vehicle out there by the end of the month and I gave him some suggestions. I haven't heard back from him, so we'll see what, I'll, I'll give you a progress report two weeks from now.
Um, Silver Lake and elementary school, I can give an update on that. So, we had the public hearing for the school, uh, for the elementary school committee, uh, no one showed up, so we held it open for two minutes and then closed it, we talked about.
Did we get an invite?
Believe so. I mean, we posted it.
But did we get, I don't know that the selectmen and or the finance committee specifically got an invite.
I don't know, I can ask, uh, we did not vote the budget. You'll see a large increase as the shared cost changed, with the four positions moved from Silver Lake in the shared cost. So that's about a forty thousand dollar increase to the elementary school and you'll see about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars revenue increase for Silver Lake when you do the assessment calculation. We're having the public hearing, uh, on Thursday for Silver Lake. I just received a copy of version three tonight, it's a two point nine percent increase to the overall budget. So, from last week's or two weeks ago's budget, I did assessment numbers on my spreadsheet, I have us about a hundred and thirty-five increase for Silver Lake and had Kingston over five hundred and fifty thousand.
I, I also had a thought too, uh, when I learned that, um, Sacred Heart was gonna eliminate their senior program. Will we have impact from that potentially?
So we were presented a spreadsheet from the number of, uh, students that go to parochial school, it didn't say Silver Lake directly, so at the elementary school, I don't think it might be one or two students, so I don't think that's a big increase.
It was just the senior?
No, it's, it's, they, they're, they're ending the.
They're ending the classroom, the high school, yeah, yeah, no, I didn't mean senior class, I just meant the senior high school.
So, you will see probably an increase from the Kingston enrollment, cause not many students from Halifax are going there.
That's what I was.
There's a decent proportion of the, I don't know, I wanna say it was like sixty students total.
Assuming they go to Silver Lake.
Right, if they don't go to Silver Lake.
If they go to charter school or something.
So if they go to a charter school, that will be.
We get to pay everybody's kids.
If they go to a charter school, there'll be a definite impact, but we won't find out about that until later on in the budget process when they update the charter school, uh, net charges. So, um, I did dive really deep into chapter seventy to try to understand why you see such a big increase in the net contributions to Kingston at least, and it directly affects the proportionality of the enrollment.
Right.
So it's the town's total town assessment, it's the town's income from DOR from a previous year multiplied out by a number that they pick each year, that gives you what your max spend is, what your net contribution is. And then, uh, foundation budget is just the number of students times all the items inside. So for about, for Halifax, it's about ten thousand six hundred dollars per student. So if a student goes from Halifax Elementary to a charter school, and the charter school's fifteen thousand dollars, then it's a net fifteen thousand dollar deduction from charter school, from our chapter seventy. So where we can educate them for about ten thousand six, charter school gets the fifteen.
But it's, you know, it's typical state.
So the, the.
Never fund anything, just keep pushing it on to the community.
And I learned tonight, which I didn't know, the thirty dollars per student increase that we're getting isn't actually towards the regular chapter seventy funding, it's towards the student achievement gap, so we have to come up with a plan for how we're gonna increase student achievement with the thirty dollars per student.
Here, have thirty dollars, kid.
Get yourself an iPhone.
So, so that the minimum contribution we're getting doesn't have to go towards the regular budget, it's supposed to go towards.
Additional.
Additional remediation for increasing them, so.
So it becomes this.
So you have to add positions to your budget, or come up with another way that you're gonna, you know, a software program or something.
Or they're saying, saying, they're saying that, that our teachers aren't as educated as the other teachers are? Therefore, they can't teach our students any more education?
No, they're, they're saying that the students that score the lowest need to improve the most. Before it was, everybody had to get to a bell curve.
Right.
Now everybody's at the bell curve, now it's how do you take the students at the lower end of the bell curve and move them up? So it's a continuation of, of spending that you, once you get the kids to the spot that they told you you need to get to, it's, okay, well, how are you gonna move everybody else up?
Yeah, right, it just keeps on going.
Cause they're gonna be go back to the old wood days, if a kid doesn't achieve anything, he's held back at such time as he doesn't improve.
Well, the, the, you do have to pass the tenth grade, uh, exam, but from what I was told, if you don't pass it and you have passing grades, you can still get a waiver, so there's not really any.
Punishment.
A, and the chapter seventy has really nothing to do with the achievement that the school gets, we don't get more money and, and if a school doesn't do well, are you gonna punish that school?
Yeah, right, right, yeah, how does that have self-defeating, yeah.
So, there, there is a lot of, the proportionality that Halifax is going to have to continually spend is going to increase faster than our prop two and a half will allow it to. And the discussion on the flip of the enrollment is going to directly impact us because the foundation budget isn't gonna go down. So once the enrollment flips over to us, the net contribution is going to be a large number that I don't think the town will be able to afford.
Well, the whole system's unsustainable.
So we, we, our, our foundation budget is about twenty-one million dollars, this budget is twenty-six million dollars. But you don't get credit for everything that's.
Right.
In, in, you still have to provide health insurance, it's not in the equation.
It's similar to the housing in town, we can't use mobile home park.
Till.
For affordable homes to, to meet the standard of ten percent affordable homes.
I think there's another bill pending, but I don't think it's gonna go anywhere.
So, I, I did speak with Rob O'Donnell, who's the finance director for Desi, and they're going to have stakeholder meetings. So I said, well, I'm on the selectmen and the two school committees, I think I qualify as a stakeholder.
You got a stakeholder, yeah.
I said, please include me on that, so they have to issue a report by December of this year to the legislature, both Desi and DOR, on changes to the chapter seventy four. But looking forward over the, the law that they passed, they need to make changes over seven years. The first year, the money all went towards the gateway cities who have English language learners as their second language. So, we're, we're not gonna see any impact on chapter seventy, probably ever.
On that depressing note.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will, offer that motion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All right.